Okay, so again, welcome to the January 29th, 2025 School Committee Meeting. Members of the public may listen and watch the School Committee meeting via livestream at www.sandwichtv.org and the Sandwich Community TV Education Channel 8. We will begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Just before we get into the first item on the agenda, just for those of you who are at home and those of you in the audience, we just completed a public meeting of the Sandwich Middle High School Student Advisory Committee and the Sandwich School Committee. This is just to let people know, this is by law in Mass. General Law, Chapter 70, Section 38m, where there will be a Student Advisory Committee of students elected by their peers who are ex officio to the school committee. They are non-voting and they do not attend executive session, but they are critical to our work here and to get information on the ground, real time, information about what's working and what could be improved in the district. And so, we convened tonight. We are supposed to meet every other month while school is in session. And so, I think we had a very positive first meeting. I think some low-hanging fruit and some items that came up that might take a bit more skill and time to come to a good resolution. So with that, I will open the first public forum of the evening. Does anybody wish to be heard at public forum? Seeing none, I'll close the public forum. And the next item are donations, and we have a number of donations tonight. The first is the College Dula LLC to the Sandwich Public Schools Wellness Committee.
Yeah, as Dr. Miller has alluded to, all four of these donations, very generous donations, are to the SPS, Sandwich Public Schools Wellness Committee for our upcoming Wellness Fair, first ever Wellness Fair, which will occur on March 13th. So this first one is from the College Dula LLC. It is $500, which gets them platinum-level sponsorship.
I have a motion to accept this donation.
Excuse me, I move that we accept the donation from the College Dula LLC.
Motion made.
With appreciation.
Second by, a motion made by Kevin, seconded by Bert. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 7-0-0. Thank you very much to the College Dula program.
Okay, and the second one is a gold-level sponsorship, a donation of $250 from Cape Concierge Physical Therapy, a physical therapist business here in Sandwich, again for the Wellness Fair.
May I have a motion?
I move that we accept the donation from Cape Concierge Physical Therapy with appreciation.
Do I have a second? Second by Danielle. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 7-0-0. Thank you, with appreciation.
Next one is from our friends in the Sandwich Middle High School PTSA, also a gold-level sponsorship for $250 for the Wellness Fair.
I move that we accept the donation from the Sandwich High PTSA with appreciation.
Second? Can I have a second? Second by Danielle. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 7-0-0. It passes with appreciation.
And then, last but not least, is a donation of $200 for silver-level sponsorship to the Wellness Fair from Golden Touch Enterprises of Wober.
I move that we accept the donation from Golden Touch Enterprises as presented.
Second. Second by Danielle. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, 7-0-0. Again, thank you to that, for that donation. Next item is to review and act on the meeting minutes of the regular business meeting dated January 15th, 2025. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes as presented for the meeting dated 01, January 15th, 2025. Excuse me.
You have a second?
No.
Second by Bert. Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
7-0-0. They are accepted.
I'm done motioning.
Okay, next item, correspondence and announcements. I have none. Any other correspondence or announcements? All right, moving on to the Superintendent's update.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. First thing that I want to do as part of my update is just to recognize the phenomenal efforts of our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Quinn, kind of putting together all of the workshops, the keynotes, and so on, for what, in my opinion, was a very successful professional development day. I hope you had an opportunity, as I kind of put in the background notes, to click on the link that showed the program for the day. It really, really was a busy day that kind of had the thematic approach, building upon our first-in-service day of the year with the theme of around shifting the conversation and really thinking about creating learning environments that are rigorous but also nurturing in the same way that really promote deeper learning for our students. We started the morning with a keynote address by our speakers, Pam Moran and Ira Sokol, who both very much have a national reputation in getting teachers to think a little bit differently as far as promoting deeper learning. And then throughout the day, really kind of based upon what we've been talking about all this year, the themes that are prevalent in not only our district action plan but our three school improvement plans, things like culturally responsive practices. We actually had a very popular session on AI and using generative AI in the classroom. Other things like co-teaching, a lot of popular sessions around use of tech tools such as Canva, Smore, and Quizlet. I know BJ McNamara was very actively involved in working with our special education staff and other related service providers on things like aligning IEP goals and specially-designed instruction and so on. So again, I know Dave would say, it takes a team, it takes a village. We had not only outside presenters, but we had a lot of outstanding internal presenters, our teaching staff, our admin staff, and so on, to kind of share the knowledge. So I just wanted to recognize that. I know that that really is an invaluable day for us, and in my opinion, it was highly productive and very, very well utilized a success. Second piece that I have, just as an update and within the packet, is the correspondence that I sent out to all staff and all families yesterday regarding the Power School data breach. I think it's probably a sad snapshot on society today, but when we notified all of our families back, I think on something like January 13th, I've gotten absolutely zero response. I know on one of the Facebook pages, there was a slight thread that kind of petered out pretty quickly. I think it's a sad snapshot of how frequently things like this happen. But our IT Director Bryce came to me about a week ago and said, okay, Power School is taking ownership of this. We had to make a decision. Do we want Power School to reach out directly to our families and to our staff and to talk about what their game plan is? Bryce and I made the decision, yeah, that would probably be pretty wise. So as I've informed in general terms, their strategy to kind of, you know, show good faith is to offer anybody who wants to take up on it, free year, two free years of identity protection and credit monitoring services through Experian. You know, as I noted in the email that I sent out to all families, we never have collected social security numbers, we never plan on collecting social security numbers, however realized there are some districts that do do that, and that is obviously a source of much greater concern as far as a really key piece of personal identifiable information. So we're anticipating, within the next two to three weeks, there will be direct contact from Power School Corporate to our families. And actually, it would also include families of even alumni, since we've been using the Power School system. Then I had the opportunity on Friday, along with Kevin, to attend the Cape and the Islands Legislative Breakfast. As I note in the background notes, I don't think it was terribly well-attended, maybe 35 to 40 people in total.
It seemed like it was bigger last year.
Yeah, a little bit. And, you know, it could have been the element that they had us in the Dennis Yarmouth Intermediate School Auditorium, which is pretty good size. It wasn't exactly the best space. So there was, you know, a decent amount of our Cape and Islands representation there, but really, the crux of the program were breakout sessions around kind of shared opportunities to share expenses, share experiences, and so on. And then really, there were three breakout groups. One around special education costs, the second really around facilities and the need to upgrade facilities. That one was led by the Superintendent of Barnstable, who's been going through some considerable challenges with regard to mold remediation issues over the last year. And then the third group, which I facilitated, was around potential opportunities for increased collaboration amongst the districts with regard to student programming, particularly at the high school level. So I think there were some good conversations. I think, however, a little unfortunate that there wasn't more people there and more voices being represented. I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Kevin?
Nothing, I mean, did we solve anything? No. It made me feel, in a way, good to know that, you know, when I think about our challenges with facilities, we're not alone. You know, I think about a 35-year-old, two 35-year-old buildings and a 50-year-old building, then I start hearing about 70 and 75-year-old buildings, and I just felt that much little better. But it was good to know we're dealing with those challenges. The one thing that we heard from the Congressional delegation, one of their focuses, and kind of going back to the collaboration piece and how, like Marushak earlier, during the student session, we're talking about how do we retain, you know, how do we bring teachers back, is housing. You know, how do we, how is there affordable housing on Cape so that new teacher right out of college can afford to live here? So not that we're going to fix that at this table tonight, but, you know, what do they, you know, that's a bunch, it's a challenge for us. You know, going the outer Cape, it's twice the challenge, so that part was.
Yeah, and a lot of the things that we grapple with are grappled with in an even more profound way by the Superintendents of Dennis Yarmouth and Manamoy and Nauset. You know, we have a considerable amount of our employees, our teachers, our employees coming from the other side of the bridge. If you're working in Orleans, not so much. So some of the challenges that we face are much more severe in the outer Cape. And I think we have from Michelle, an update on the FY25 budget.
Hello, everyone. You have the December report in front of you. This will be quick. It was a quiet month, not much was going on. So there's not too many changes from the November report. We still have $900,000 worth of circuit breaker funds to apply. We're in good shape, we're still in the black, and there's nothing really standing out that's a problem right now.
You answered my question about the circuit breaker.
Okay. We do it quarterly, so you'll see it in January.
For those that don't see it on the screen, there's, as Michelle said, we're fine, but there's a, the budget balance showing negative for special education, but that's when the state circuit breaker fund is just distributed separately to close that gap.
Right.
So it's a paper negative.
Mm-hmm. Great.
What's the issue with the Forestdale School?
With the Forestdale School?
Yeah.
Salary-wise?
Is it salaries?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's just the increases in.
And what about athletic travel? It looks like, I mean, we just started the second season not too long ago.
Athletic travel, well, you have to remember that we've encumbered all the monies and then.
Okay.
Things are coming in, so it's, he'll be over, I think, but, you know, next year will be a better year.
Hopefully, yeah.
It's encumbered, but the, correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, the gate receipts have not been applied towards the transportation yet?
Oh, the gate receipts don't go against.
Okay.
Just salaries.
Oh, salaries, I'm sorry.
It's important for folks to know at home. All right. Any other questions on the monthly budget report? All right, other topics, no, wait a second here. Other topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair? I have none. Anything else? It's not quite 6:30 yet. Let's see, so moving into new business, the Sandwich Middle High School Niasse accreditation report.
That will be presented at the February 12th meeting.
Okay, was that a revision? Okay. Sorry about that. How about the draft 2025-26 calendar, first reading?
Sure. You have in your packet the draft, the draft calendar for the 25-26 school year. It's kind of standard. As I put in the background notes, the, a couple noteworthy things, this year, Labor Day is the first of September. It's the earliest, obviously, it possibly can be. So therefore, we start with students the day after, which is the second. We have a similar phenomenon with the holiday break that we did this year. I say kind of except in reverse, in the sense that Christmas and New Year's Day in 2025-26 falls on a Thursday. So what we are proposing here is to have a day and a half of school, the 22nd and 23rd of December. It kind of doesn't make sense to come back to school for one day on the second, just like it didn't make sense this year to come back to school on the 23rd of December, which was a Monday. So therefore, that's what we're looking at, you know, something a little bit shy of two weeks for holiday break. Realize all of the districts on the Cape, with the exception of Barnstable, are doing that type of holiday break. And then we also had some, as I noted, parent requests to also include the end of the terms for, for the middle high school. So as a result, we put the end of the terms but also tentative final exam days as well.
Good, oh, sorry, anything else?
That's it, for the most part. Otherwise, it's pretty template.
Should we have a question?
I had two comments. One, I heard this from a couple folks, is there any way, even if we could mark when midterms are for the high school, because those are shortened days for parents?
Mm-hmm.
So it's just kind of, I mean, I realize it may, it can always shift a day if we have a couple weather days, but at least that gives them the ballpark, you know, when they look, you know, if they look at the calendar, they can.
Sure, yeah, it'd be something comparable to the end of the second term, yep.
I think that'd be helpful, and I guess I was looking at the day and a half for, we are starting on the second day of September, I'm not hard over on it either way, but any consideration for just doing two full weeks and finishing on the 19th on a full day in December, kind of what folks feel?
I think the piece is realize that that then would back you to June 17th as your last day, not that that's necessarily horrible, but then building in your five additional days, that would bring you to June 25th.
And then you'd have Juneteenth as well off.
You have to, that's why it goes to the 25th.
I'm not going to get jammed on the 19th, as I told you. I got it, I see you. Pay me now, pay me later.
Those buildings are going to get worn. Yeah, and June. And a parent I had spoken to had suggested, what about with the school calendar, rather than do the Friday before Martin Luther King Weekend for professional development, what if you did it on the December 22nd, or maybe the 22nd or the 23rd, and the kids had the days off and did professional development?
And I'm sure the staff would be really, really excited and charged to come in for that pre-Christmas PD.
I know, I'm just, don't shoot the messenger. I was just relaying what a parent had asked me.
Am I correct in saying that the kids are coming back for a half-day, just for that, just for Monday the 15th in June?
That would be a correct interpretation, Kaylee. Yeah, that's a, that's a little tough that, that.
Do we have to take that half-day on April 3rd? Like, could we do that as a full day and then fill it out on June 17th? Is that a possibility?
I think that is, even though.
Half-day counts.
You unzip this. And I believe the change was made the year before I came here, but I kind of lived through this one in my previous district in Worcester County. Even though it's not explicitly mentioned there, I believe April 3rd, 2026 is Good Friday. Okay. Gee, I don't know why, Kaylee.
Is that contractual?
It's, I think, I think still, districts are kind of all over the map. There's a decent amount of districts where it's just a full day, there's a decent amount of districts that it's a half-day, which seems to be kind of a transition, but there are still some districts that have the full day off.
I would imagine if they're in school anyway, I guess that's my, my only question, is going into the half-day, I would be interested to see if they're in.
I mean, I, I know in speaking, well, I shouldn't say speaking for, but the Catholic tradition usually is ceremonies like the Stations of the Cross do not occur till around 3 o'clock anyway. But, you know, I think, and also realize, April 3rd, for that half-day, half-days in the Commonwealth, you get credit for a full day. So even if we were to go a full day.
Two half-days doesn't equal a full day.
Correct.
But that's not a contractual requirement for the Good Friday?
Yes and no, in the sense that it's not explicit, however, anything related to the school calendar is subject to collective bargaining. So if there were to be, you know, some kind of change, other than, you know, a new national holiday or something to that effect, it should be negotiated through an MOA.
Okay. I think what you see in the end of June, though, is, that's an easy call for the Superintendent next year, if it's an iffy on a snow day, so you don't come back for a half-day Monday.
Yeah, yeah.
And the only way we could rectify that with the current calendar minus snow days would be to take away another full day somewhere, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, I think the only flexible ones that are not holidays are the day after Thanksgiving.
Not going there.
And Christmas vacation, or December Vacation Week, or April and February Vacation.
I mean, I would assure you that if I, if you were to add on January, Friday, January 2nd, my gut tells me the attendance would probably be less than stellar.
That's really my ask for the December 22nd, too. It's the, but, okay, I understand that, I understand the impact on the backend, so.
But if the kids are in school, the parents have more time to finish up the last-minute shopping on Christmas. Yes.
That's our job.
Okay, so we'll vote on this on the next meeting.
Yeah, it's first read, although I would really encourage folks, if there's any feedback, anybody listening at home, anybody in the audience, if you have feedback on this, you know, Sandwich School Committee at, what is it, sandwich.k12 dot, reach out to us, it's on the website.
Sandwichk12.org.
Thank you, sir. And let us know if there's, if there's a concern there, and then we can make any adjustments needed before the next meeting we vote.
Just one more thought on that, that, the note on the yellow bar at the bottom with tentative finals, and you said midterms you'll add and term-end dates. Maybe a note that it's tentative because it's subject to change with snow days or unexpected school closings, just so parents would know why that might change, right? It's not just kind of at whim. It's happening these days unless we're making up an extra day of school, et cetera. And are the term dates tentative as well?
Yeah. Anything is subject to change, particularly because of a weather cancellation.
Yeah, so maybe just, I would suggest that, that note that why it's tentative.
Yeah.
Subject to change due to unexpected closings.
And I know we're trying to get a lot on one page of paper, but for those that are visually challenged, like myself, I don't know if that note could be highlighted and colored or something to just make it easier to find.
Sure.
It is 6:30, and at 6:30, I will entertain a motion to open the public budget hearing.
Motion made to open public budget hearing.
Motion made by Bert, second.
Second.
Second by Tracy. Any discussion? All in favor to open the public meeting?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye, 7-0-0. We are in session, the public budget meeting is in session, and unlike public forum, in this session, the committee can take questions from the floor, so.
(inaudible).
Anybody wish to be heard at public forum on the budget?
Public hearing.
Pardon?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, excuse me. I see no one. Unfortunate, but.
Maybe they were all happy.
We'll see tomorrow, right? Okay, seeing nobody, no one wishing to be heard at public forum, may I have a motion to close the public forum?
Motion made to close the public forum.
Public hearing.
Hearing, hearing, sorry.
Just to keep us legal.
We don't have too many of these, so, hearing. Second by Tracy. Any discussion? All in favor for closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
7-0. It is. It is closed. Moving on to subcommittee reports, Student Advisory Committee. Do you want to make any comments?
You missed the actual approval of the budget.
I did. I'm sorry.
Just that minor detail.
One of our three functions, yes. Approval of the, may I have a motion to approve the FY 2026 Sandwich Public School Operational Budget?
Made to approve the Sandwich Operational Budget.
I think we have to be specific in the dollar amount.
And the dollar amount is?
Well, if you're, if you're going to do the motion, you need, you need to say it as such. It's in the book on page four.
I have it here. It's 40 million.
Forty million something.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the FY, FY 26 Operational Budget of 40,810,156 dollars.
Second, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a vote? All those in favor of the FY 26 Proposed Budget for the amount of 40 million?
Eight hundred and ten thousand.
Eight hundred and ten thousand dollars.
One fifty-six.
One fifty-six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
7-0-0. It is approved. And now we can have these subcommittee reports. Student, any subcommittee reports? Student Advisory Committee. Kevin, do you want to make any further comment?
Sorry, that's mine. For anybody listening at home or anybody in the audience, there is a super, excuse me, a school committee, Student Advisory Committee. It's an advisory committee to the school committee comprised of students from the Sandwich High School, Middle High School. By law, we're supposed to meet with them, and we did tonight. We're gonna admittedly, every town is supposed to do this. It doesn't always strict compliance hasn't always been there, but we are going to be, really try to reinvigorate this. So we met as a public meeting because it was the full, the school committee. So by law, we have to do that. So we did all our normal procedurals. The only thing we did a little bit different is we had pizza for, for the students that came. And, yeah, we, we had a slice, too. It was a really good hour. We heard a lot of good feedback from five students from Sandwich High School. They raised a couple issues for us. Some which are kind of quick hitters, some which are going to take a little bit more research. They included access to feminine hygiene products in the bathrooms at Sandwich High School. Is gym, do they have to do take gym? It's required once a year as a semester course. But if you have a student athlete that's playing football or lacrosse or field hockey or running track, whatever, after school and getting their workout there, is, you know, is there value there when they could maybe, in lieu of gym, take another class? So it's something we're going to research. There is some Massachusetts law that mentions PhysEd. We just have to navigate that and see if we can't come up with some level of accommodation to provide the students greater flexibility. For the students that drive the traffic flow at the high school when it's time to get out, Ms. Nelson's back there. Thrilled about that one. Just competing with the buses, the kids want to get out because if the buses go first, it delays them. Students get a little impatient. There've been, there's been occasional fender benders. Is there a way we can adjust traffic flows? We'll look into that. Access to paper towels and not just the powered hand dryers, that's a fairly easy one. And there was talk about alternate places to eat lunch instead of just the cafeteria for kids that might want to acquire a place, things like that. There is some supervisory safety issues that need to be explored and things like that, but these are all things that are certainly within the realm of, of the possible that we're going to look into. The one that was raised was the, the girls locker room. From a facility standpoint, I think anybody who paid attention to these meetings is, facilities has been a focus of this group, but I think we can I think I, it's been on the radar, and the phrase I used with the students was that we can put it closer to the middle of the radar and see where we can go there. But it was a good hour. We're, we're going to meet them again in March, most likely at the high school. And again, it will be a public meeting because it, there is a quorum of the school committee there. So it was a good hour. And I thank you, and I thank again the students for attending and being so honest and forthright.
Excellent summary.
My thanks.
Any other subcommittee reports? Liaison Advisory Committee reports? Warrants. May I have a motion to approve the warrants?
I make a motion that we approve the warrants that were signed tonight?
Second.
Second by Jeanine. Any discussion of the warrants? All in favor? Aye.
I'm staying tonight.
Oh, gosh.
Yep. I'll explain my-
Six-
6-0-1.
6-0-1, thank you. They are approved anyway.
Yep.
Future, let's see, in our second public forum, public forum. Anybody wish to be heard at public forum? I guess not. No, no one to be heard at public forum. Future agenda items. Bert?
Haven't had it on all day. So the public was benefited by that. I'd like to have, have us on the agenda, maybe in a month from now, a report on many of the things Kevin mentioned from the students on the, you know, what our progress is on the, on the feminine hygiene products, the gym, the parking, the paper towels, the cafeteria and the girls, the girls locker room. When I said gym, I meant how much kids, how much time kids had to spend in gym. So I'd like to have a, on a future agenda di- gee, I'm getting tough talking. I was okay with the kids today, this afternoon, though. And in a future agenda item, I'd like to see a report back how we're doing on that.
Very good. We will make a note of that.
In, in February, Jeannie will be coming back to kind of share the specifics. I apologize, Sue, because we, we had talked originally about for this meeting, the Niasca accreditation report. That was my oversight. But also, we'll, we'll get a twofer from Jeannie. I know she also wants to bring forward any changes to the program of studies, which would be great in February for the simple reason that helps the school get started with the scheduling process that much quicker.
And I have one thing, and I don't know that it can happen quickly. And maybe as part of this strategic planning process, it could be addressed. But the issue of weighted grades at the high school. I know it's been customary of decades to give higher weights college prep, honors, AP. But I review a lot of transcripts for a lot of scholarship opportunities. And that's wonderful. But that student who plugs away in the general college curriculum will never get to the top. And that's unfortunate because if you're waiting an AP exam higher than a general, I don't know what we call it, general.
College prep.
College prep. There's an inherent inequity there. And not to say that AP isn't strenuous, but we're trying to link the amount of effort and the amount of work that goes into an AP course versus a general college prep course. But that student in that general college prep course may be working their butt off. And so as I've been thinking about this a lot, you know, maybe the question of class rank needs to also be looked at. So again, I know that will send up-
We're doing some, you thought Kaylee was doing some unzipping before?
I think, I think it's, it's kind of become the norm. And that maybe it's worth a discussion. And at the end of the discussion with various input, it may be decided to keep it the same. But I'm always impressed when I see these GPAs that jump off the charts. And then you've got this plugger who's got Bs and maybe an A- and will never quite get there.
Sure. And I think this could be, this discussion could be a full meeting in itself. But I would also counter that GPA is one measure of achievement and growth. And, you know, I get the pleasure of attending all of our various Honor Society induction ceremonies. And yes, a lot of times it is what I refer to as the usual suspects, some of our real high-flying kids. But there are also kids that are, as you described, the pluggers, who aren't in all AP and honors classes. And those kiddos are being recognized as well.
So maybe we find a way to broaden-
Sure.
The determination of what success means. So anyway, I just throw it out there. I know it's incendiary. But, you know, I, I had kids, too.
Yeah.
You know, you know, one was a salutatorian, so, you know.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's future discussion.
I, I actually raised that as well previously when we had the reviewed the handbook about graduation requirements, because the, the weighting was right above it. I, I fully appreciate where you're coming from. I kind of looked at it from a, a different lens of is the differentiation, is the work level for a college prep versus an AP? Is, is, is the current weighting recognizing that difference in workload appropriately? But I think it's certainly, wherever it shakes out is certainly worthy of a detailed discussion.
So any other future agenda?
Just as part of, you mentioned the program of studies, and I mentioned this way back when, and I know you were talking to the folks in Westwood and the idea of, if not this year, in a future year, having a personal finance as a requirement. I know that's also incendiary and has second and third order effects, but I think a focus in, in making sure that we enable students so they have those basic financial skills as they walk out the door before they sign for a student loan or sign for a credit card that has 22% interest, things like that. I'd like to have that discussion as well.
Excellent.
And we have the opportunity and, you know, I, I've put this out to both Sue and Kevin, who brought this forward, but I would put this out to all of you. Dave and I had the opportunity, we were at a MASSS meeting last week. We connected with Tim Pavovar, who's the superintendent of Westwood and a good friend of mine. We have an open invite to spend, you know, a half a day or something at Westwood High School to kind of, you know, check out the curriculum, talk to the teachers that are actually implementing it, to students and so on. So if any of you are interested in doing the road trip to Kevin's Stomp, Old Stomping Grounds, by all means, we can do so.
Know how to get there.
Yeah.
As does Michelle.
Acknowledgements and closing-
Oh, does just say-
No, just for agenda items, the, the potential for the next round of the Golden Apple.
Yeah.
I think that's probably time for us to do that. Maybe vet a process a little, we were a little spontaneous last time, so maybe figure out how we're figuring that all out.
I don't envy the people that were on that committee because those little backgrounds, those nominations were amazing. Okay, acknowledgement. Yep.
I know that we just did a little run of iReady, so if it was possible at some point in the next, you know, few weeks to kind of look at what's the progress from the-
Sure, that's easy.
Awesome.
I think we've got the spring lined up, which is great. Great, good topics. Acknowledgements and closing remarks. Danielle?
Well, I just, first of all, wanted to thank all the students from the School Committee Advisory Committee tonight for meeting. Marty, Jane, Sabrina, Sadie and Shreya. We had really constructive discussion. It was great. It was, it was really nice to sit down with all of them. I also wanted to recognize, recognize four of the advanced choir singers from Sandwich Middle High School. One, Marty, was here tonight. That they had tried out this weekend for the All-State Choral Auditions, and four of them made it. So Cameron Phillips, Brendan Cronin, Will Lodge and Marty Mulroy. They auditioned and they're going to perform at Symphony Hall in March for the All-State. So congratulations.
Any other acknowledgements and remarks?
Echo, the, the students who came tonight, also like to thank all the, the staff, all the effort that went into prepping the budget. Because it was, it was a ton of work, I realize. Our public hearing was somewhat anticlimactic. Yes, it is a big number, but I think it is fiscally responsible. It is a 2%, 2.7% increase. And I think the town's guidance was three and a half, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong. It's, given all the challenges, and everybody knows things are costing more at home, giving all those puts and takes, I think what we are putting forward to the taxpayers, I'm not, it's not insignificant. I get it. I get a tax bill like everybody else, but I think it is fiscally responsible, and I think it is the right thing for our students.
I would just add to that, and I think the district did a good job on finding efficiencies in that. And I mean significant. Just, just what you were able to do with paper.
Photo, photocopies in paper.
Just the impact of that across the three buildings was fairly, what was the dollar figure? I'm forgetting it, but it was a big dumber. Forty, yeah. And, and that, hopefully, we are diminishing our reliance on paper. So thanks to all for that.
And just lastly, before we adjourn, but just for everyone's awareness, the superintendent is presenting the budget to the Finance Committee Tuesday, February 11th, which is the night before our next meeting.
And I would say to the public, if you were not able to get here tonight and you still have a question, our superintendent is open to receive questions and will give you the best answers that we have at this point, so. All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
Can I have a second?
And have a meet, and have our next meeting on Wednesday, February 12th?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.